Give you a few more minutes to think about it, anybody? All right, Paige.
I'm the new secretary by affirmation.
Yeah. Thank you Paige, I appreciate that. All right, then Marcia Kelly, is Marcia here? Is she online?
I do not see her online.
Hopefully she'll get here. She wanted to give us a little legislative update, and I'm surprised she's not here yet, so she'll probably be here shortly.
I know she's planning on coming because I ran into her down at the Capitol.
Okay, so she'll have to do an answer to the forum. Okay, thank you. All right, then we're gonna do the candidate endorsement forum, or we're gonna do it this way. The candidates will have two minutes to introduce themselves each, okay? And then Paige, our candidate support committee chair, will read questions, one question at a time, and each, and the candidates will get to answer those questions as best you can. You'll have two minutes to answer each question. And, right, yeah. And we'll do it so that we're not having the same person be the first. Okay, we'll mix it around. And then after we've gone through the questions, we have seven questions. They all received the questions in advance, so they know what the questions are so they can prepare. We'll let each candidate speak for five minutes at the end to do a final pitch and tell us more about their vision for the city and why it is they're running. Okay, that sound good?
Yes.
All right, let's do this. All right. Thank you so much, also.
Thank you. Um, I did not bring a printed copy. Do we have a printer here?
We do. I, I.
I should have printed those, but I was, my day was crazy.
Yeah, I know, I had them printed out and then forgot to bring them. So, do you need them, do you think?
Yeah, I took a picture of them, I'm just gonna.
Okay, good, okay.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you everybody, uh, thank you to the candidates.
Paige, please stand closer to the flag, do the, thank, thank you.
Thank you everybody, and thank you to the candidates for being here tonight. I'm Paige Barton, I am the chair of the candidate support committee and your new secretary. Um, and we are here to, um, we're going to begin with candidate introductions at two minutes, and I, uh, we will start at this end of the table, so if you'd like to go first, then we'll just go down.
Can Councilwoman Stapleton and I do rock papers, so do the.
Yeah.
Can you do the timekeeper too?
Um, I think so, yes. Our, well, our, I don't believe our timekeeper is here yet.
Yeah, he's not here yet either.
Oh, are you? I can do it. Okay, yeah, if you wanna, that sounds great. Thank you Fran.
And Fran, can you like give us something to let them, when we have thirty seconds left?
I will absolutely do this.
Thank you.
Um, so if you wanna take two minutes to introduce yourself as a candidate and, uh, what, what you hope to, um, do when you're elected.
Got it. Greetings everyone, um, my name is Dr. Urban Brown, I go by Urban. Born and raised in Louisiana, so I'm one of seven siblings. My parents taught all of your kids to not only work hard, but also be disciplined in your educational fields. And so, they taught us how to serve, they taught us how to give back. And so, I joined the military. Are there any veterans anywhere in the house? Any veterans? I'm the only one. So I served in the military, United States Navy, for eight years. And so, that really was the opening door for me to learn more so about how to give back. And so, when I think about my transition in the past decade and, and moving to this area and being involved not only with, uh, the counselors, the mayor, of course, just volunteering, uh, with the Human Rights Commission, and being a former legislative director. For me, it's always about service. It's always about giving back. And so, when I think about the opportunity to run for this particular election, my mindset is, put the hat on again, one more time, to serve and to give back. And the question I always ask is, how can I help? So, that's why I'm running.
So, hello everybody, I am Hamadi Jackson. I am also a candidate for Ward five. Um, a little bit about me, I've been in Salem for about nineteen years. Um, single father, I sit on the, I'm the chair of the Human Rights Commission. I also serve on the Salem Police Foundation and also Casa Marion County on, on the board of both of us. The reason why I am running, because to me, it is a progression of what I do every day. In addition to my board work, I'm also, I also work in homeless services. So, this is, I feel like this is my opportunity to put all of that that I do on the outside into one place where I can truly make a difference and truly help. Not a career politician, but I'm thinking this is fun. I know I'm gonna stumble, I know I'm gonna say things probably wrong, and I'm, I'm gonna get out of here and I'm gonna be like, "I should have totally said that," so bear with me. I apologize in advance, because I've done some, that's just kinda how it goes. Heartwood, of course. Um, other than that, I won't take up too much time. This is me in a nutshell, and feel free to ask me whenever. Well, I guess we're gonna ask seven questions, but. But that's how it goes, so thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Celine Coleman. Um, my background is in public health. I moved to Oregon about a couple of years ago and was working in Lynn County, recently migrated over to the better county, Marion. And, um, I'll be working in the public health building. If you've been on, in the new building on Center Street, that's where I will be. And over the last few years in Salem, I've enjoyed my time here and believe that Salem can go from being a pretty good city to an extraordinary one. My goals are to get businesses to come and remain in Salem, support career connected learning for high schoolers in the Salem Kaiser's, uh, school system, and to collaborate with community-based organizations to reduce violence and break the homeless cycle. Um, in addition to balancing the budget without, um, heavy taxation on our workforce.
Virginia.
Thanks. Hi everybody, Virginia Stapleton, your Boardland City Councilor, running for reelection. And happy to be here, it's good to see so many faces that are familiar. So, thanks for coming out, um, on a Thursday night. Um, I am a lifelong resident of Salem, uh, born in the Salem Hospital and have, uh, lived in and around. I see somebody shaking their head.
Wow.
Uh, yes, and, um, born into a big family, and of course, service was always, um, the point of a big family. Um, and, uh, so have been volunteering in many, many different capacities throughout my lifetime. Um, and as I, uh, grew up and had many different jobs, um, I went into the field of having my own kids and being a stay-at-home mom. Um, and I've been doing that for the last eight years or so. Um, and it really gave me the opportunity to start diving into local politics, um, helping out my kid's school, and then eventually finding my way to city council. Um, and while on city council, I've had, um, really an amazing time, uh, being in service to all of you. Uh, the work that we've done on homelessness and housing has been really, um, really meaningful to me. It's amazing to drive around downtown and see the difference from when I was running last time to what we have now. So, I'm really excited to continue my work there. Um, the work that we did on climate action was also very powerful to be there and take that vote, um, and also all of our DEI initiatives. Um, and then lastly, my passion project is transportation, um, and so advocating for the bond that we had passed, um, and working to implement that bond has really been, um, really exciting for me and something I look forward to in the next term. Thank you.
And yeah, uh, so we are going to begin, uh, the first of seven questions. I'm going to begin with Hamadi and go down and then end with Dr. Brown. So, um, just so everybody knows, um, the first question is, uh, the Salem payroll tax measure that was passed by a majority of the city council was soundly defeated by voters. In hindsight, do you believe the situation was handled correctly? And if not, how would you have handled it differently?
Okay, so, short answer, no, I don't believe it was handled correctly. I believe that we should start with something that's so personal, hits home. I feel we should start with the voters. Let's get out all the information that we possibly can. Well, first, let me, let me rewind a little bit. First, let's look around and see where we can make any changes, any cuts, or anything else anywhere else. If that, if we can't find the answers there, then we go to the voters. We explain why it is that we need to do this and what we need to do. Just lay it all out there, give them the chance to vote. If it doesn't go, which it didn't, if it doesn't go, then we figure out something else. But I believe that we should always begin with the voters. If we're gonna be hitting your pocketbook, you should have a say in it.
Um, no, it was not handled properly. Uh, residents, neither residents or businesses were properly engaged. And prior to the five-four vote, um, at city council, many residents who voiced their opinions about the tax were not heard. I understand that this was part of the recommendations from the Revenue Task Force. However, it was a recommendation, not a requirement. More community engagement would have prevented thousands of dollars from being unnecessarily spent. Evaluating the city's expenses would require more time, but it is an alternative way of bridging the gap between expenses and revenue. Um, the current budget has some expenses projected to increase four hundred percent from fiscal year twenty twenty-three. What justifies such a large increase? Thank you.
Hi everybody, you all know me and my relationship to the payroll tax. Um, so, um, I will say that I think one of the things that I could have done better was prepare myself, um, for what we knew was coming. Uh, maybe to be a little bit more cynical, um, but that's looking back now, right? And when you're in it, I had a task to do, and that was to stay positive and try and get, um, as many people as possible educated on the vote and get them to the point where they could vote yes. The payroll tax was our way of trying to avoid painful cuts that we are experiencing now and we will experience for the next two years. Um, the payroll tax didn't have a sunset date where we were going to go to voters, and we were going to use that implementation time as an education time to help people understand what was happening with the budget and understand the painful cuts that would be the opposite choice. Um, I've been talking about this as a strategic failure, and I think that's really important to, to kinda talk about here. If we wouldn't have done what we did, we would not be talking about payment and lieu of taxes down at the Capitol right now. We would not be having the community conversations that we are having right now. We would not be having those community conversations of revenue or of what the city services should be funding. Those are all really, really important things to be doing. Payment and lieu of taxes, if we can get that done, and what it costs was everything I gave this last year to try and make this happen, and we can come away with five or six million dollars a year in the general fund, that is a success in my book. Was that the thirty-second? Okay. Um, I also think that the main issue is gonna be measures five and fifty. And I think what the payroll tax did for the entire state was elevate the conversation of five and fifty and where every single city across the state is having struggles with right now. Um, and I think that that was very valuable and, um, necessary to do in order to, to move on as a whole state.
Thank you. Hi, Dr. Brown.
So I'm gonna follow Councilwoman Stapleton, because when I think of that question and the work we did last year, uh, I don't apologize. I, I own my vote and I stand right behind it. As someone who eventually will be a politician, I believe you gotta own up to your mistakes. And I do not think for a second that that particular deal was a mistake. When I think about Rep. Anderson and House Bill forty-seven-two and what we're doing right now, last year's work, it did elevate the conversation, because we are talking about it. Because we know that we've cut some libraries. How many of us like our libraries closed? Exactly. No one, but raise your hand. And so, had we had the opportunity to move this forward, we wouldn't have to go back and change something. But the conversation is still at the table. Meaning, there are some more cuts that are gonna come. There's no way around it. And at the end of the day, we have to ask ourselves, when we get that six or seven million dollars that's gonna come down to us, that's important. And that will help offset some of the public services. That will help, but that will not be enough. And so, we will still have to come back to the table, roll up our sleeves, and have a conversation about how are we gonna get out of this? Oregon structurally has a tax problem. I'll say it again, Oregon has a structural tax problem, and we have to fix it. And when we think about some of the work that Mayor Hoy has done, and we think about what Rep. Anderson has done, that conversation thirty years ago. It started, it didn't just start last year. And so, when I think about being the chair of the Budget Committee, none of us get paid for it. We roll up our sleeves and we do the work. So I stand behind that, and I'm still saying collectively, it will take all of us to make sure that we fix Salem, so our young people will not have to do it for us. It's up to us to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Um, our second question is, um, Salem Kaiser School District is presently in a position to lay off between fifty and seventy-five employees due to budget shortfalls. In your opinion, what can the city do to continue facilitating good services to students and youth? What do you perceive as the biggest impact of the school staffing reduction on the city? Um, and I'm sorry for not clarifying before, but we're gonna start with Celine.
Um, so first thing that should happen, um, spread the wealth. West Salem High School has the majority of emergency programs that provide, um, licensure for EMTs, fire. Um, so by high school graduation, these students are positioned to be employed, um, in Salem and beyond. Um, West Salem is one of the only schools with a fire program in the Salem Kaiser School District. Not every child is able to transfer within to that district for various factors such as transportation and schedule conflicts. The city needs to make the cuts proportional, um, across the board to all the schools, so that certain schools such as McCay and North, which are typically, um, more heavily affected than the other high schools, don't experience greater effects for those students. Um, the education disparity will only continue to grow, um, between the five high schools, and the students that may require access to CSOCs or community school outreach coordinators will suffer the most from these cuts. However, I do remain vocal that the CTEC programs will continue to provide alternative pathways for students that will be the most affected by these cuts.
Thank you, uh, Virginia.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, uh, the Salem Kaiser School District and every district across the state, again, is hurting because of measures five and fifty and our broken tax system. Um, I feel a very strong, uh, connection to our education system because I have two kiddos who are, um, at parish in North. Um, and we are firm believers in our public education. As a city councillor, it's a little difficult to kinda comment on this because their, their budget is very different than ours, and how we overlap is, is very, um, minimal at, at best, especially on our budgets. Um, but we have partnered with, um, transit and with the Salem Kaiser School District to provide free, uh, youth ridership. Um, and we hope to continue that, although I, again, because of the last question, we are in a budget crisis, so, um, things will get cut. And I don't know how we would continue to fund that, but it is a program that we've had in the past, and it has worked really, really well. Um, and very proud of that. Um, my first year on the Budget Committee, um, I protected the Care Core, which is a program for at-risk youth. Um, helps them with job readiness, um, and is a partnership with the ICA box and the City of Salem, um, and helping them with their resumes and interview skills, um, and, uh, job creation. So, it really is a fantastic program. Again, I'm not sure that's going to withstand, um, our next round of cuts. Um, but those are things that we have dedicated our time to this, this last couple of years, and what I hope to continue when we do find new revenue. Um, but it really is hard to comment on this, um, although we impact each other greatly. Um, it is really hard, uh, for a city councillor to comment much on the school district's budget.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Brown.
And I'm going to second that, uh, seems like I'll do a lot of that tonight, Councilwoman Stapleton. Um, and in all seriousness, as a former educator, I was a teacher. If I know what it's like to be laid off and lose your job, that's not a fun experience at all. And no one wants to lose their livelihood. No one wants to lose their job. And so, when we think about the school district, we just sat down with the superintendent, what, a week and a half ago? We sat down with her, community leaders were there. And not just elected officials, uh, but there were, there were face leaders in the room. Uh, there were people that, you know, wore the uniform or a badge. There were a variety of people in this space, and they were all there for one reason, to collaborate. And we have to do a better job in collaboration. We have to do that. Measures five and fifty, I said this before and I'll say it again. If we want to make some serious changes in our state, we will need legislation. We will need some help. And with Salem Kaiser being the second largest school district in the state, it is not just about Salem Kaiser. PPS has gone through the same thing. School districts across the state and the country are having to make cuts. So we have to ask ourselves, seriously, what do we want to cut? What will it be? How will those cuts impact our students? At a conversation day with the mom, her kids, one of her kids ran away from school. And we are very, very fearful that something's gonna happen to this young man. Will he end up being in the system? We know that there are systems that are going to be, programs are going to be cut to where we cannot reach all of our students. That to me, that to me worries. Because when you think about the young people on the street, if they're not in school, juvenile detention is the next stop, and that is unfortunate. And I believe that we have to fix that before that happens.
Thank you, Hamadi.
So, one thing that we're gonna have to do is think creatively. I mean, obviously, we know there's gonna be cuts, we know that, that things are gonna happen. So, maybe we look for opportunities where we can increase volunteer partnership with different agencies, anything that we can. Um, maybe we can look at all the different universities and things that we have around here where we can offer some type of program for college credits, where people can come in and help, maybe they can help teach in athletics or tutoring, or just basically creative solutions that we maybe haven't tried yet that are on the table. I mean, there's a multitude of things that we can do. I can rehash what everyone around me has said, but we're not gonna do that. But the thing is, is that we can, we really need to start thinking outside the box. We really need to reach within the community to help the community. And so, that's what I think is gonna have to happen. There's just not, there's no way that we're gonna be able to do it without each other's help.
Thank you. All right, we've cycled through, so, uh, this question, and we're gonna start with Councilwoman Stapleton. Um, when you are elected or re-elected, would you prioritize restoring library services and hours?
As soon as I get more funding, yes. Uh, we're back to the funding conversation, which we'll just, we'll just keep hitting on that, uh, for the rest of the night, a little bit. Um, it really is important that we find a new revenue source, because, um, as I mentioned to some of you earlier this week, the vision for our libraries is beautiful, right? We have a fully funded and fully open and working, um, staffed main library, one in West Salem, and we have two more in the bond that we passed. And those hopefully will be south, and one in northeast Salem. Um, coupling those with some affordable housing and maybe even transit hubs, it really is a beautiful picture for the future with our libraries. And I'm fully committed to finding a revenue source so that we can get there. Um, and I am, uh, really inspired by the future that the voters have, uh, agreed with us, that branch libraries are important for our city. And, uh, and it really is going to be an amazing thing in the future.
Uh, Dr. Brown.
And I will echo that. Um, yes, if elected, libraries are still gonna be tough. I'm not elected now, and libraries are still gonna be tough, because we need them. And when I think about what we need, uh, we had a council meeting a few nights ago, and the librarian was there, um, doing a beautiful job. She is doing three jobs. Three jobs, one person. Three jobs, one person. She's working a lot, because why? We have to cut. So when we cut, there are ramifications. There are programs that will, will no longer have the service. One in particular is the program that helps a lot of our senior citizens who are homebound. They read books, they need that material, because why? They don't have the activity for them to leave their home. So when we think about a certain demographic, it's not just our students. There are, are some of our older citizens who need that plus also, they need that help. So when we think about the libraries, it's about every single one of us in this room. And it is to be a top priority, and it has to be a top priority. If we do not take a step back and ask ourselves, how do we get more revenue in different streams of income? We'll have to cut more. So now we gotta come back and ask ourselves, where can we get more revenue? How can we do it? Do we need to apply for grants? That's a possibility, but it's gonna require people. And right now, the system we have, it's not working. And it's unfortunate that the way that we're going, we will have to make more cuts. I don't like saying that, but this could have been prevented last year. If save Salem had passed, we wouldn't be having this conversation. That's the truth. Because although we're here, now we have to have the conversation. Now we do gotta figure out what we have to cut.
Thank you. Uh, Hamadi.
So, definitely. Um, I was actually, I grew up in a library. That was what me and my father did every Saturday. It's something that I tried to do with my son, but unfortunately, if it's not this, he's, you know. But, for me personally, I love the library. I think the library is necessary, whether it be for books or the, you know, the library of things, where now you can go get whatever trinkets, gadgets that you, that you might be looking for, just the community space in general, the library is a gathering hub. It's a safe spot for many people. So yes, priority number one, like, community services, that, those kinda things, yeah. You, you have to have them, you just have to. So that's gotta be one of the top priorities.
Thank you, uh, Celine.
Uh, yes, right now, library is open forty-eight hours. Uh, for a person that works a full-time job that leaves about, what, eight hours, that can easily be enough just by life, um, throughout the week. Uh, for a city with equity as one of its priorities, this is a step back. Um, the library provides a free environment for people to learn, study, meet up with friends, take up a new hobby, or even play board games. Um, I know their staff is already limited and will be further reduced with the removal of the seven positions, um, passed on Monday. However, education is the gateway to a more informed community, and the library is one conduit for this.
Excellent. Um, so this is our fourth question, and we're gonna be starting with Dr. Brown. Um, it is that our fourth question is, "The Salem Police Department budget has been holding approximately twenty-two vacant positions, reserving about seven million dollars of the city's budget for over a year. Do you believe those funds should be allocated elsewhere?"
That's a great question. It's a hard question to answer. Um, when I think about police services, public services are huge, and we need them. And this is how I answer it. If there's an emergency that I need at one o'clock in the morning, I need to make sure that when I call nine-one-one, I wanna make sure that someone shows up at my home. I wanna be sure of that. I wanna be sure that there's gonna be someone that can make it to my home in a certain amount of minutes. When I think about cutting public services or anything involving the police or fire department, I struggle with that. I struggle with that tremendously, because every single one of us, if the truth is told, we want our safety, we want our security, we want that. If you have an emergency, late at night, in the middle of the day, you wanna be sure a first responder is gonna show up. You wanna be sure that someone can make it to your home in a certain amount of time. And right now, nationally, that average for a first responder to get to your home is five minutes and fifty seconds. Not so for Salem. I just sat down with some police officers this week to hear their side of it. And I know when we start talking about our serving people in, in blue, you can get people, they polarize on different sides of it. But at the end of the day, it's about safety. And those men and women who are serving in those particular capacities, they have jobs also, they have a livelihood. And so, when I think about the millions of dollars that are on the table, I still say we have to invest in that. And when I sit down and I talk with Chief Bomack, who's actually just down the block right now at a, at the Violence Town Hall, that's where he's at, because why? That's a need, that's a concern. Violence is on the uptick in the city, and if we don't decide what to do, it's gonna impact not just you and me, but all, our whole community. We gotta do better.
Thank you.
And so, no.
That, that's for me. No. Uh, boy, they shouldn't be allocated anywhere. Now, I will tell you why, this kinda hits close to home for me. I, I've said it before, I am a single dad of a teenage son. If we are homeschool, he's home all the time, right? So, I work out of town, I work in Milwaukee. The thing is, is that when I leave my son at home, I need to know that he can pick up the phone and someone's gonna be there if anything else. That is number one, one of my greatest fears. So, when we talk about cutting police and allocating funds other places, I, I get the eebie-jeebies. Hence the reason that I sit on the, you know, the Police Foundation, so that way that I can help any way that I can to give them what they need. I also work with the lead programs, so law enforcement is, is a very big thing to me. So no, don't allocate the funds anywhere else. If that's where the money needs to go, then that's what needs to go. We need to fund the positions that we have to help keep things safe, running smoothly. That, that's very important to me.
Thank you.
Um, no, I don't think the funds should be allocated elsewhere. Police are essential to the safety in our community. Salem's pretty big. You look at going from north to south, west, east. So I mean, I think seven billion, seven million dollars should remain for the twenty-two vacant positions. If you don't have police full staffing, you're gonna run into where you're gonna lose police officers because their work-life balance doesn't exist anymore. You're gonna have a lot of overtime. That's already happening, millions of dollars being spent in overtime. So that's probably built into that seven million. I think if we have adequate staffing with the police force, that amount of overtime can decrease.
Thank you. Councilor Stapleton?
Thanks. Yes, I would agree with folks here. We do not have a hiring issue, we have a retention issue at the police department. And there, the need is really, really high. And I know that there are some in our community who would like to live in a world where we don't need police. And, and you know what? We all would love to live in a world where we don't need police. But as a city councillor, you know, we get the emails, and we see what they're responding to. And we see that they are needed in many, many places across the city. And so I think that we can keep the money there, and we can hire as we, as folks come through the academy. And the hiring time is so long, you know, it takes almost a year to get people out and out on patrol and doing their work. So I think it's really important to continue to support the, the police chief. And that's another thing that I'm proud of that we've done at council is hiring our new police chief is outstanding. We have done so much to make shifts towards community policing. We have done body cameras, we've done the hiring panels and other D E I processes to help diversify the staff. So we are doing so many good things with the police department. And yes, it is a department that is changing and growing up and growing into what the community needs it to be right now. And that's really important to support because, like so many folks here have said, when there is an emergency, we do need them to be there. We need them to be ready, we need them to be well-rested, we need them to have a good work-life balance so that when we are asking them to go out into the community with a weapon, that they are, you know, fully aware of what's happening and not stressed to the breaking point. I really feel strongly about ensuring that that is not the case for our community.
Thank you.
This is our fifth question. We're, we're going to begin with Kamari. The city of Salem has made major improvements for connecting homeless individuals with short-term shelters and transitional housing. What are your ideas for funding existing services and continuing to build on the progress our city council has made?
Okay, so homeless services. I might have heard something about this. So grants, whatever grants, whatever funding, whatever programs are out there in the national as well as the state, I know our governor has tried to do as much as he can, declaring homelessness, being a city emergency, whatever funding is out there, we chase, no matter where. We chase it here, there, far. We go to the organizations that we have, we see where we're at, what they're doing, how can we help? We just keep chasing funding. That is, it's never-ending. I work for a nonprofit, and that's what, most of what they do. They grant, say, a yearabouts, you know, two nickels under a stone somewhere in Iowa that somebody might have gotten, and they're writing grants for it. So as a, as a city, we're gonna have to do the same thing because the way we take care of our homeless neighbors, it, it shows the character of our city. So we just chase funding. And that's, I mean, I don't know where that funding is gonna come from. I'm on the outside sitting in. Should I be on the inside looking out? I might have a different answer of where we're gonna look, but on the outside looking in, we just keep chasing funding, and that's it.
Thank you.
What needs to happen is collaboration and in terms of community-based organizations and what agencies receive funding and making sure that funding is sustainable. One-year funding is not cutting it. That's not gonna create a permanent solution for homelessness. Midwill limit, Valley Community Action Agency, all of great, is not the only social service agency. Outside of Arches, there aren't many low-barrier options for those living in shelters, particularly in west or south Salem. The city, county, and state need to work together in collaboration with agencies to determine root causes of permanent homelessness and actually address those. There are a couple of questions that are rarely asked or answered. What causes a person to stay homeless? What barriers are in their place? I just spoke with Lee yesterday that transitioned out of a shelter, and she had to pay a seven-thousand-dollar deposit just to get into an apartment. I'm glad that there is more affordable housing available in Salem recently with the Sequoia crossings that opened up in Ward One. However, my goal is making sure residents are able to keep their housing and also stay off the streams.
Uh, Councilor Stapleton? Thanks. Yes, I am so proud of the work we've done. Really, y'all, I can't say it enough, this council has thrown everything at this issue. And starting with our micro-shelters, the navigation center, the Safe Park Program, the S O S team, I mean, these are life-changing things that we're doing. And just seeing how many lives that we've saved, how many people we've gotten into housing has been really an honor to be a part of that team. And I think it really took a courageous council to take all of those COVID funds, the ARBA dollars, and even though we knew they were one-time dollars, we knew we had to invest in our community in this issue, knowing that we would have to find a sustainable source of revenue later to fund, continue funding them. So we are at a place right now in Marion and Polk County where we are really just, the advances are coming so fast, y'all. And it is because we were courageous and put that money all towards setting up a system that works. Our continuum of care works, and we put it out there, and we just believe that we are gonna find funding. Here's the thing, this is a community issue, and it needs a community solution, in my opinion. This cannot be privately funded. And the best way, in my opinion, is that the government needs to step in and help us here. We cannot just continue to go grant after grant after grant. That is exhausting. You are not guaranteed anything, there is no way to run a program or a business. And we have to find sustainable funding. And I think that comes from the state. And I think we also need to pressure our Marion County Commissioners to give us adequate mental health care and addiction services to help become partners in solving the issue. And then, of course, we need to throw everything we have at affordable housing units more and more than in the city of Salem to help prevent homelessness from happening and ending it in the long run.
Thank you. So good question.
This is probably my favorite question of all of them. In my day job, I work as a policy advisor. So I get the opportunity to actually look at policy, read it, say, this works, or this doesn't work. And I get the opportunity to ask myself, okay, if we don't have streams of revenue, where do we get the money? And I can tell you, I have had over twenty years in writing grants. If you've ever written a grant, that is not one, no, I put it in the same category as products of root canal. It's not a comfortable experience. And if you, if there are grant writers in here, then you know, it's a taxing job. And I've been writing grants for years. I just wrote one last year. We can do it, but that is not sustainable. At the end of the day, this is not just a Salem problem, this is a state problem. And we will need help from the governor's office. Case in point, Mayor Hoy set down with the governor last year, and I believe we gotta keep doing that. We need more micro-shelters. Because we gotta ask ourselves, we didn't just wake up and have a homelessness problem, you gotta go back to history. History would tell us in the eighties, for those of us that were here in the eighties, we know that there were a lot of policies in place that were, that were put there to shut down a lot of the centers, and people had mental illnesses, they went into the streets.
Yep.
That happened in the eighties. So we created a problem. Hello, y'all? We created the problem. So if we created it, we gotta fix it. And at the end of the day, we will have to continue to lean on the help of legislation. And that, it takes me back to question number one. It is about collaboration. We are going to have to partner with all of our state reps, reaching across the aisle, whether it's left or right, we have to find a happy medium. And I believe the work that we started last year, we will be able to pick it up again this year if I'm put into that seat.
Thank you.
This is our sixth question, and we're going to begin with candidate Celine Coleman. House Bill, in this current short session, House Bill forty-one twenty-six seeks to repeal state statutes that prohibit rent control. If rent control prohibitions are repealed, do you support implementing rent control in Salem?
My answer is yes and no. So I would support it only for housing. That was voted in the last fifteen years. The state's rent control law doesn't apply to that housing. So, you know, you can go up a hundred percent. Yeah, that's perfect for everyone, right? Once that housing is fifteen years old, then it would be under state law, so it wouldn't qualify for being under Salem's. This prevents the market from becoming too inflated, especially with all the new apartments that are being built, particularly in the downtown area.
Thank you. Councilor Stapleton?
Thanks. Yeah, what I'd like to say about this is that what we currently have is not working. And I believe that the, the solution is going to be supply. We have to focus on supply because that will drive down the cost for everybody, not only to rent, but to buy as well. And that will help us start to get out of the bottleneck that we continually have with our housing, where people are just getting stopped up in different areas, whether it's an apartment or duplex, and they're not being able to buy their first home or sell that first home and move to another home. Starting to continue that continuum of housing and how people are moving through from a tent on the sidewalk to a micro-shelter to, you know, affordable housing, all the way up to market housing, and then moving on to buying a home. For me, that is where my focus is going to be, on continuing to increase the amount of housing stock across the spectrum, but with a focus on affordable units. And for me, it's really important in my ward that we revitalize our downtown and make that shift from big-box stores to a thriving downtown with housing and mixed-use buildings. And I'm very proud of the work we've done so far on that, making sure that there is affordable units mixed in with market-rate housing so that the government doesn't have to help out as much with the gap funding in those projects, but also that it, you know, the rising water raises all ships, right? So really working at that, diversifying the housing stock that we have and making it across the city so that we can continue to drive down the cost of rentals and what it costs to buy.
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
Can you read the question one more?
The question is, House Bill forty-one twenty-six seeks to repeal state statutes that prohibit rent control. If rent control prohibitions are repealed, do you support implementing rent control in Salem?
I do, I do support that. Couple of weeks ago, I had a conversation with someone that works here in Salem. And I'm a homeowner, and so I, you know, pay a mortgage, like a lot of us in this room. And she's a single mom, she has three kids. And I asked her, I said, can you share with me a little bit about, you know, where you live, how are things going? She lives in an apartment. She pays over three thousand dollars for a two-bedroom apartment. Three thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars. I know about you, that's a problem, which tells me this, to be poor in this city is expensive.
Yeah.
To be poor in the city of Salem is expensive. And I don't think that's okay. I, I don't think we should turn a blind eye to that. If you were to give this question to Mayor Hoy, he would probably say something like this, we are very proud of the buildings and apartment buildings we're building in the community because every single one of them will have affordable housing. Not all of them, but there will be units available. That is some of the work that not only him, but some of the councillors have agreed to. We do have a changing city, and we are bringing more affordable housing. And every time a building goes up, we're gonna guarantee to make sure that there are affordable units in that building. Because we cannot continue to have single parents paying over three thousand dollars for a two-bedroom apartment. Because you know what that tells me? If she misses one note or one payment, she'll be on the street.
They will be on the street.
They. And not only they, and I work for DHS. Those kids, think about the children. So for me, we gotta have more affordable housing.
Thank you. Kamari?
So I'm kind of a moderation kind of guy. So I definitely see where some rent control will definitely help our low-income families. But I also believe that our property owners should have a right to make a little bit of money, and I shouldn't be restricting them as much as I would like to. Because it is, it is their small business, it is their business, whether it's small, major, whatever, it's their revenue stream. So I kinda go right down the middle with it. Yes, I believe that we should definitely have some low-income housing, there should be some set aside, there should be some type of something to help those who are less fortunate, people like me who are just broke, let's just call it like it is. So should there be something to help us? Yes. But at the same time, I don't want to do anything to restrict people's ability to earn. So I think it's a fine line. I mean, I can yell all day long that I want this, and I want that, and I want this, but one of the things is that I'm hoping to represent everyone, so I have to do what's in the best interest of everyone while helping as much as I can.
This is our final question. We're going to be beginning with Councilor Stapleton. As a city councillor, do you support asking Marion County for reimbursement for city law enforcement services when the Salem Police Department investigates crimes outside of city limits?
Trying to sit here and smile for two minutes. You know, I think this question is coming from a place of frustration with the current relationship that we have right now as a city with our county commissioners. And it is coming from a place of frustration of not being seen, heard, advocated for, fought for, invested in. They have said on the record, I don't know how many times, that they do not care what happens in Salem. And I think that this question is really good proof of that frustration coming out. From what I gather with our emergency services, those folks are not doing this tit-for-tat business. They are focused on the job at hand, and that is emergency services, whether that's police, fire, EMS. And they view our county partners as partners, whether that's Polk County or Marion County, and they're working together to keep the people in our area safe and healthy and their property safe. And I think that as a leader in any community, especially now, it is very important that we get away from the us and them, that we look for collaboration, that we encourage our community to voice frustrations in respectful ways, but then advocate hard for what they feel that they need in their communities, and advocate and hold their electeds really accountable to what they need in their area. If your county commissioners are not giving you what you need, you need to go to their, what is it, Wednesday at ten AM?
Nine.
Nine AM. Okay, very equitable for everybody to go and be able to attend those meetings. But go and make your voice heard. And I think really that's where this, this is coming from. And I think that as a leader, I have to lead by example and really push for getting rid of that us and them mentality and advocate on behalf of Salem and try and hold our county commissioners responsible for what they need to provide the city of Salem.
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
The short answer for me is, is yes. When I think about the reimbursements that the county should be supplying, the answer is yes. When I think about, about this week alone, I've sat down with several firefighters this week. I sat down with the sheriff of Marion County. I've sat down with several of our practitioners who actually have some homes available where former A I C people who were formerly incarcerated, where they can go to when they are released. I've sat down with quite a few people this week. Why do I do that? Because I wanna hear what's going on. I don't want to imagine it, I don't wanna read it, but I want you to tell me, and I wanna be there to hear it. And when I hear and I sit down with these individuals, that tells me that we got some gaps. And they're not just gaps that Salem just kinda like stumbled upon. We need some gaps where every single person can come to the table. We need some gaps where every single person can come to the table and have a discussion. And right now, we do need greater conversation with our county commissioner. We just do. We just need to get along better. We've just got to find a way to play everybody in the sandbox. Can we just get along? And right now, we can't get along. And so we gotta figure out, we gotta figure this out. The adults have to figure this out. And so when I think about what we need to do, it does involve collaboration. I started with that word and I will end with that word. It is about collaboration. It is partnering with our county commissioners to make sure that they are in this with them and we're not by ourselves. Because sometimes it feels that way. And that's not just for me, but that's for the people I talk with on a day-to-day basis. When I'm walking up and down the streets or have meetings, they also want that. And if they want that, then it's up to Urban to advocate for that until we get it.
Thank you. Ahmaudie?
Okay, so I am, as I've said, I've stated, I am a supporter wholly of law enforcement. So I am a supporter of law enforcement. So my simple answer is definitely. I mean, we are stretched thin in the city. We just are. So if we're doing things outside and the county can pick up the bill for that, then sorry, you gotta pay with Joe. That's just kind of how it goes. So simple answer, short, to the point, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Celine? Just like everyone else, my answer is yes. We're already asking the state for payment, you know, in lieu of taxes because of all the buildings they have here. Why not ask the county for reimbursement, especially with the significant expense? If you look at the area where Lancaster splits between city and county limits, as well as South Salem, so yeah.
Thank you. This brings us to the end of our questions. Now each candidate is going to have five minutes to conclude, speak about what their priorities are in their campaign and anything else that they would like us to know. And I think that we started with Counselor Stapleton, so we'll start with Dr. Brown.
Oh, yeah, okay. So a few nights ago, we were in the same room. And my reasons for running, two reasons, it goes back to public safety. And that's a concern of mine. It will always be a concern of mine because I want to advocate for everyone else when it comes to their safety, when it comes to just being able to walk their way down the street in Salem, making sure that I'm safe. That matters to me. Is there a lot more work we could be doing? Yes. Are there some gaps we need to close? Yes. Are there some people we need to invite to the table, make sure we hear their voice? Yes. And I believe we have to advocate for all of them, which leads me to number two. It is about inclusion. We want to make sure that we can advocate for every single person in the city. We want to make sure that we can advocate for every single voice, to make sure your voice is heard, your face is seen, and your identity is affirmed. I believe in that. And when I think back about my military experience, it's about service. It's about giving back. And I also think about the work that we've done for the past few years on the Budget Committee. We've done a lot of good work. Did we make everybody happy? No. And at the end of the day, if there is any politician that's making everybody happy, that's a problem. Because sooner or later, you have to bring every voice to the table. And I don't believe that we should agree on every single thing. I believe that we can agree to disagree, but not be disagreeable. If we're disagreeable, the work ceases. The job stops. The progress ends. And so going forward, I'm going to advocate for more. I'm going to advocate for more micro shelters. We need more of that. I'm going to advocate for more public services. We need more. And lastly, our libraries. I started with that and I'll end with that. We gotta make sure that whatever we're cutting, that is first on the list to be reopened. The same way we've done with our firehouses. 10 years ago, we closed some in Salem and they came back. I want to make sure that we don't have to close any more of our firehouses. And when I sit down with all of our service people that are in those uniforms, I want to make sure that we can advocate for them and to protect them. Because why? It is up to us to do that. And that's the reason I'm running and I'm going to stand by it.
Thank you.
Thank you guys all for being here, first and foremost. Thank you for allowing us to speak and to talk ear off for just a little bit. Why am I running? To me, this is the elevation of my service. This is what, you'll hear this thing with all of us. We are all very passionate about our community and we all are called to serve. For me, this is the elevation of my service. What I do in my day job, what I do on my outside times, it's all about trying to make my community better and leaving a lasting mark for those who come next. I'm not trying to pass the buck. I'm not trying to do much of anything but help. That's all I want to do, is help everybody the best way that I can. I've mentioned that I sit on a few different boards and to me, this is, this is where it all comes together. This is what it all leads to. So this is my opportunity to do something. So I'm not sure where to go from here. I did not write this out. I should have said, this is five minutes and done it. I did. So I apologize. But just know that I'm up here because I'm very passionate. You'll hear the passion with all of us. I really, really, really want to help. I want to do whatever I can, whether it's my different approach to our homeless problem. Because it's a problem. We don't have the funding, so maybe we need to look at things differently. Maybe we need to try a different approach. This is my day job. This is what I do every day. Whether it's our libraries that are closed, whether it's the police positions that we may be cutting, something's got to be done. And so this is my chance to put my stamp on and this is what we're going to do and this is how we're going to do it and we're going to go forward from there. So anyway, I'd like to thank you guys again for letting me talk, letting me ramble. I should say not really talk, so just go anywhere. But I appreciate you all and thank you.
Thank you for taking a little bit out of your evening just to hear us talk. Salem has the potential to thrive and flourish. I believe I provide a unique perspective, being a transplant from Phoenix. No, I didn't bring the sun here, but I'm not trying to bring ideas either from Phoenix, but you know, I went from the big city to the smaller one. And I feel like there's a lot of room for improvement within the city. We can get more businesses. I know we have Amazon in South Salem, but you know, I want other businesses too. And in regards to homelessness and the violence, I think we need to address the root causes of those to really tackle those issues so that they don't just percolate under the surface. And then lastly, I would love for alternative pathways to be supported for high schoolers within Salem Kaiser so that they remain in Salem or Kaiser instead of going to other cities like Portland or Eugene. And lastly, I'm ready to listen and be a vegan of the people and for the people.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks everybody for coming out tonight. It's great to see you all. And I think for me, this next term is really going to be focused around revenue. We have to address the issue, not only advocating at the state level for payment loan taxes, should that fail, and we need to continue advocating also for 505 reform. So that will be a huge part of that. Also, I'm just so excited to hear what the Revenue Task Force comes back to us with. They're doing a lot of really heavy lifting right now. And that will then land with council. And at that point in time, it will be up to council to work together to find the best path forward. And then we are going to be the ones that have to take it to the voters. That is a huge lift. Huge. You know, right now, I'm working 30 hours a week or so on council. When we go back to the voters, that's well over 40 hours a week. And that is work that is going to take a sustained effort. I am not completely optimistic that we will get to yes on the first vote. So that means we will then need to revamp that and go back out again. That is going to take a tremendous amount of council effort and commitment to finding a solution. It's just a side note, it's also going to take support from folks like you, okay? We really do need your support on council in ways that are showing up, in ways that are public testimony, in ways that are silent or quiet encouragement to your counselor or mayor. Those are really important things to keep us going. So that's going to be huge this next term and throughout the rest of this year. Homelessness and housing, of course, we've all talked about that a lot, but continuing those efforts, finding funding for that, continuing to advocate for more affordable units within every housing unit that's built. And then of course, transportation is another huge part. We are in the middle of a transportation master plan update. We are starting year two of three, and this is a passion thing for me. As you know, I've passed the 20th Plinny, the Vision Zero, and gone out and gotten money to support those with a $2.8 million grant from the federal government, which I'm very proud of that work that we've done, and committing to zero deaths in our transportation system. That all happens through how we design our streets and that work is happening over this next term. So I want to be there. I want to be at the table and advocating for the things that I so strongly believe in. So thank you. If anybody is here from Ward One and you have not signed my petition, I do have that. Would love to have you support me in that way. Mayor Hoy is here as well. If you haven't signed his petition, please do that. And thank you again for being here and being such caring members of our community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. We are really, really lucky to have committed people willing to step up and do the really unpaid work with all those hours as you were talking about. And that's just wonderful. Thank you all for coming and sharing your vision with us. At this point, we're going to take a moment to hear from Marsha. Marsha, our legislative chair, is going to give us a little update. What's happening in the legislature short session right now. Come on up. And we're running really, we did great. We don't, we're not going to need an extension. We'll probably get it out early. So. That's my, that's my graduation at this point.
Okay. So. Thank you. So the Legislative Committee meets by Zoom on the first day. The first, the third Tuesday. And sometimes I'll simply, will leave me alone and say, should we do something on this? We have presented testimony on three bills so far in the short session. One was 1537, which is the land use bill. It came out of committee with some changes, some on the UGB. It still has some UGB left in it. I believe it was cut like from 150 down to 50.
Almost cut basically in half.
100.
What?
It's down to 100.
It's down to 100. For big cities, okay. I haven't read the, because I was doing some other stuff too. We put in testimony on Representative Ann Anderson's payment in lieu of taxes, which you've heard about already today. I got up and testified as well as wrote follow-up testimony on that. And then there is a bill to have ODOT study the feasibility of extending the West Side commuter rail that goes between Beaverton and Wilsonville down to Salem using the Pacific Western tracks. It's not light rail. It's heavy rail because it would share with the and so we, I didn't testify on that because there were lots of people from the area who did testimony, but we didn't submit written testimony in support of that. Some other things that are happening that we don't necessarily testify on is a bill for the governor to appoint a US Senate replacement and that within 30 days, the governor already has the ability to appoint someone, but apparently there's no timeframe on it. And so people are a little bit concerned about that. There is a bill that we could consider supporting called the Family Financial Protection Act, which is updating the standards when somebody, not, this is not like foreclosures the banks do, but this is updating the standards when people get sent to collections and what you can do because they have not been updated for a long time. In Washington, the value of your home that's exempt from garnishment is $125,000. In Oregon, it's $40,000 right now. So they're going through, hopefully that will go through. And there's a bill that would require 1571, which would require disclosure of using artificial intelligence and campaign material. And it's been through a work session. There are a lot of housing bills. There is one that has actually gone for a floor vote and passed in the House. And it's creating a residential wholesale sale, residential wholesaler registration. There are apparently banking companies that are coming in and buying up houses and living units. And we need to know who they are so that we know whether they're good players. I actually think that that may be some of the problems that we're having with.
Yep.
And just a lot of housing bills. I don't want to take too long. But if you have some questions, let me know. And for Mr. Sundell, I talked to one of the OEA lobbyists and he doesn't think that they're supporting or would support the bill about changing the teacher's standards and practices.
Good. Awesome.
Marsha, oh, did you talk about 1537, some of the rewrites that's being discussed now?
It just got. Basically, it's the part with your urban growth boundary.
Right.
And it's, I did not have a chance to read through the dash nines.
Okay.
So people are still pressing against it, but it came out of committee. It will be going to Ways and Means because it has expenditures.
Marsha, might you just add to that? We don't believe that Salem would ratify the requirement on that bill, so that bill won't apply to us regardless of where and whether it passes or not. So you wouldn't see that kind of a plan in the Salem UGB.
And I'm not a land use expert and I was hoping that Aileen and Roger would be here to guide if things came up.
Just a comment about, if you look at the bill, the legislature will reprint the bill as 1537A engrossed. Read the A engrossed version of the bill. That is the current version of the bill. So it incorporates the dash nine amendments. So don't waste your time looking at the old bill. Don't waste your time looking at the amendments and trying to figure out what they did. Read the A engrossed version of the bill.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you. Spent many years reading the bills.
Thank you, Marsha.
I took a quick look at that. I got some emails on it and they basically just halved everything. So the 600 went to 300 and the 300 went to 150 and the funding got halved as well. So. Paige is going to speak briefly on our candidate support. Come on up and, I can't even say it. Paige can say it.
Yeah. So next Thursday, February 22nd, our candidate support committee is meeting by Zoom. Part of what that is, is we're going to be planning the agenda for the campaign boot camp. The, the idea I have for this is that there are great people in our community who should run for office. There are some seats that are not being challenged this election. And I think that we have to really position ourselves so that in election cycles, every seat is challenged. And I think that people will gain the confidence to do that if they understand how to run a campaign. Campaigns take a lot of planning. There are things that you have to think about at certain points. You have to think about fundraising. How are you going to outreach on the field and the door knockers? How do you handle social media? What is your messaging triangle? So learning about these things to better prepare our community for running for office is really important. So at our meeting next Thursday, we're going to be finalizing that agenda so that we can invite subject matter experts to participate in our campaign boot camp. It'll be, it'll be a two-part thing for like four hours on. It'll be, it'll be a two-part thing for like four hours on Saturday morning. So I hope folks can attend, but I'm really excited about that. I have some campaign experience as a field director and also as a campaign manager. So, but I don't know everything, but I have one election. So I think that we should just be having those conversations about how to win. So please join us next Thursday on Zoom.
Eileen Kay is here?
Hi, am I on?
You are on.
Oh, good. Okay, I just wanted to say about 1537 and the amendments that help a little bit with taking less, well, they say it's not farmland, but it's farmland, taking less farmland. But, and so OLCV, the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, their OCN segment, the Coalition, lowered the threat from major to some one lower thing. But the Coalition still wants no UGB fast track in the bill. They want, and I agree with them. They want the UGB parts taken out completely because the Coalition feels that there is adequate land available within UGBs now for the housing that's needed. Is that what you wanted, Marsha, that information?
Yeah.
Yep. That was it. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and then real quick, just to announce, we're going to have another candidate forum, just to reiterate, for the mayor and the other city council positions. We don't know, at this point, we have no challenges, but we don't know the filing date, is it March 12th or 13th?
12th.
12th, thank you. And we'll know after that if we have challenges to have a full forum or if it's just going to be more of a friendly conversation. But we'll have the same questions, so be prepared, Mr. Mayor.
I'm prepared. I got my answers right now if you want them.
And then also, the county commissioner race is also nonpartisan, as is the judgeships. So we're reaching out to Democrats running for those positions and we'll create a forum. We're also working on a forum for the Secretary of State position, because we have some Democrats running for that. And we're working on a forum for Congressional District Five, which we'll have out in the Congressional District Five area. From the Silverton area, we're working with Silverton progressives out there to put something together for that. Because we have three candidates running in that race. And then to update you on what happened, I think I spoke briefly about what happened with Congressional District Five and the endorsement by the Democratic Congressional Campaign Committee or whatever it's called. The DCCC, as it's commonly known, in Washington DC decided who we should have for our candidate here in Oregon. But anyway, so the chairs of the five counties that are in Congressional District Five had not known about it beforehand, were not contacted in regards to how, what our voters would think about them doing this. As you remember, you might remember, back in 2022, they backed a gentleman by the name of Carrick Flynn.
Yes.
Carrick Flynn lived in Washington DC, rented a house in McMinnville just before the election and then ran. And we asked him to stay out of that at that time. And he was running against Andrea Salinas and also Kathleen Hardner. And we had a couple people, we had like six people running or something, and DCCC decided, no, this one. So they're kind of doing it again. We have created a letter to give to the DCCC, asking them to, all right, you're, either step away from your endorsement or at the very least, don't provide any money to it or advertising this kind of stuff. Let the voters in Oregon decide their candidate. We're asking for anybody who would like to sign on to that letter because we would like to have as many signatories as possible. And right now, we're at about twenty-eight or thirty, but I'd love to have fifty if I can get there. So Gwen has signed on, Sean has signed on, Paige has signed on. Victor, have you signed on yet?
No.
Oh, we're working on this. You know, Tina has signed on. So anybody who is interested in signing on telling the DCCC to please stay out of our elections until the general. In the general election, we're all about, please come help us. But when we're trying to decide our own election, we're asking them to not decide for us. So if you're interested, please let me know. And Nam, do you have a question?
Did they make an endorsement?
Yes, they made an endorsement to Janelle Bynum. And to me, it doesn't matter which one they pick. I just don't want them to pick. So, you know, I think it's inappropriate for somebody on three thousand miles away to tell us how Oregon is and what Oregon should pick. So that's my thought. So, and that's actually pretty much all the chairs were under, you know, pretty puts off. The Shutes County passed the resolution. Their county body passed the resolution and they're sending that to DCCC. But they're also signing on to the, so if you're interested in signing on, let me know. I'll add you to the letter. Okay?
What's the deadline? Because shouldn't we hurry?
Yes, actually, we're trying to get all the signatures. Thank you for mentioning that, Eileen. We're trying to get all the signatures by tomorrow. So if you're interested in signing on, let me know tonight and I'll get your signature, your names on the, on the letter. Okay? All right, well, thank you all so much for coming and giving us your time and for running for this. It's really, really important.